Yes, we do. So, there's a bill that's Substitute House Bill 555, which is also sort of known as the Report Card Bill, that is being pushed through the Senate Education Committee today and the Ohio Senate perhaps tomorrow. And I'd like to read a section of testimony that was read last week, specifically December 5th, that came from Damon Asbury, who is from the Ohio School Boards Association. And it was kind of, it was joint testimony. There was also an individual from the Buckeye Association of School Administrators and the Alliance for High Quality Education. So these three fairly well-regarded, also the Ohio Association of School Business Officials, so four relatively well-known education groups based in Columbus, working on Ohio education matters. And so let me just read you two paragraphs, which are actually paragraphs, the first paragraph is always, you know, "Thank you, good morning, Mr. Chairman," et cetera, et cetera. We appreciate the opportunity to speak. I'm going to read you paragraphs three and four from what is four pages of testimony. So just those of you watching at home know that I'm not giving you the, I'm not going to take up the entire school board meeting, reading this testimony. But so paragraph three is, "We strongly believe that education programs need appropriate accountability. However, before accountability can occur in a meaningful way, a defining of the accountability goals should occur. It is our hope that the new report card system will be meaningful and will provide useful information to parents and to the community to accurately assess the success of their own districts." Paragraph four, "We also believe that a good report card system must have as its goal to provide useful information to school districts to guide improvements. Similar to this goal is the concern that assessment systems not be used to punish districts and educators. The end result must be aimed at helping students succeed in becoming competitive and productive citizens." And I think those two paragraphs really kind of provide an excellent summary as to what some of the battle is that's going on around this particular bill, again, this being House Bill 555, which has become known as the Report Card Bill. A friend of Euclid, a legislator who a lot of the city of Euclid knows, is our state representative, Kenny Uco. Kenny Uco often says that while children may be 20% of the population, they're 100% of the future. And I think the two paragraphs that I read from testimony that was provided to the Senate Education Committee just last week, and that little Kenny Uco quote, really kind of summarize perhaps the battle behind the language of this bill, which is to say, I'm, we're in favor of accountability. Accountability often can be used to improve outcomes that should be beneficial to our kids. And our kids, not just Euclid kids, but Ohio children, and indeed this nation's children, really are 100% of our future. The degree to which we're going to remain economically competitive in the future is directly related to the ability of our incoming workforce to be able to adapt to a changing global environment. You do not get there by underfunding education. My concern is that the pattern in Columbus seems to be to underfund something, to then criticize something, and then privatize something. And that's a bit of the pattern we've seen with public education funding. When we had a change in the governor's office, the next budget that we got from the governor resulted in many, a substantial reduction in the dollars that the Euclid City School District was able to get from the state of Ohio to operate its school system. Thankfully, Euclid voters stepped up and filled in that void with their levy vote. But again, I see that, so we've replaced some dollars that normally the state would have been providing to us. But again, the three-pronged attack on public education, underfunded, criticized it, privatized it. And I'm a little concerned that the overarching goal of changing the accountability system is not to produce a system that will help guide improvements, but it's aimed at punishing districts and educators. So we will keep the citizenry of Euclid apprised as how Substitute House Bill 555 makes its way through the Ohio legislative process, but I just wanted to kind of go on record as to what my concerns were before that process finally unfolds. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. And do we have a student, Ms. Lyce?
We do. Thank you, Madam Chair. Actually, not a report, but more of an update on a committee, a new committee that is being headed up by an award-winning teacher at the high school. It's the Technology Committee. It is being head up by a number of science, math, and technology teachers at the high school. The person leading this group is our very own high school chemistry teacher, Patrick Coleman. And if you remember, back in May of 2011, he received the author, the Arthur S. Holden Teacher for Excellence in Science Education, and mainly for his work in technology. And the purpose of this committee is to review technology at the high school level and look at what might be important in implementing district-wide that would most benefit our students and our staff. One of the first things that they discussed at the meeting, which is going to be held the last Thursday of every month, so we met on November 27th, and what these teachers are looking at doing is revamping our current learning management system. What Euclid High School uses, or what the Euclid campus uses, is Moodle. And what a learning management system is, it's just basically a software application for administrators to use. And Mr. Lyce, jump in here if you, if I'm not explaining correctly. What it's used to do is to help with documentation, tracking students, helping and reporting, creating lesson plans and quizzes and tests, and delivering education courses or possibly some training courses. And what we use at the high school is Moodle. Now, it's been a great system that we've been using for quite some time. Matter of fact, some of the lessons and podcasts and podcasts that were developed by Patrick Coleman at the high school were done using this Moodle system. The only problem is, is that we need possibly to upgrade it. And it's not intuitive, it's not quite as intuitive as you would think it would be as an operating system. So it's, some of our teachers use it, but not all do. So one of the first tasks that this committee would like to do is to look at some other learning management systems that would benefit most of the teachers in our district as well as our students. And I got to tell you, this group is highly impressive. They sat down, they got right down to the business at hand, and they looked at finding other, possibly free, learning management systems. And what this group decided to do first was to look at what is most important for our students and for our staff. And they wanted a system that would be able to import the already existing lessons that they have currently in our Moodle system. They also want to have the ability to hold forums, to continue to produce quizzes and tests. They want to be able to merge with a gradebook. And matter of fact, they asked that maybe this could be something that they can consolidate or even have a gradebook that functions as a standalone entity. They need a single sign-on, which makes it a little bit complicated when you're talking about a number of people using it. They want to be able to produce instructional videos. They want to be able to have a district-wide calendar. They want to be able to provide e-portfolios for our students that will take them, that they will take to college and to the workforce. And they also want a system that can support co-teaching. What I thought was very interesting is that the majority of the teachers that were at the table really would prefer a system that is very similar or is compatible with Blackboard. And Blackboard is the learning management system that a vast majority of colleges and universities in the United States use. And that would be an excellent transition, I think, for our students as they enter, for those who will enter university and college for next year. I will give you monthly updates about, with this committee, but the reason for bringing all of this up is that I was so impressed by the talent, the dedication of these nine or 10 teachers that came to the table voluntarily to be a part of the committee that would benefit the entire district in our use of technology and something that would benefit our students as they leave the thresholds of our campus. And Mr. Lyce is part of that committee. And I will tell you that these folks are young, they're ambitious, they're extremely bright, and I was just commenting to Mr. Lyce that that collective brain power around that table was probably enough to levitate the table. So my point being that as a district, we look at technology as a way of giving us a leg up some speed. And when we were down at Capitol Conference in November, I took it upon myself to look at some of the technology workshops and listen to some of the lectures being given by schools that are already introducing types of technology with one-to-one initiatives. And I will say hands down, we are very impressive in what we do for our students here in Euclid. And most of that is, is because we have Mr. Lyce at the administrative level, we have Dr. Smilak at the building level at the high school, and we have a group of these teachers that have taken it upon themselves to really do something that is excellent and needed and will help our children to transition to 21st century learning. And I only say that because as a high school, particularly as a high school in our district, we have to compete with charter's private and proprietary schools for students. And we impart, having children in the middle school now getting ready to enter high school, I'm bombarded by charter schools and private schools who want my child to go to their high school. So what I would say to parents of seventh and eighth graders for having their kids go to shadow at some of these other schools, please send your kids to Euclid High School. That can be arranged through Dr. Smilak, it could be arranged through our board office, because what we're offering our students at the high school will provide them with skills that'll carry them through college, through a technical school if they so desire, if they go directly into the workforce, whatever they decide to do, they're going to be ready. And I don't know if many of those schools can compete with what we have. And I was just blown away by the dedication of these handful of teachers who are coming together voluntarily to improve the technology for our students, our teachers, and for our district. So I will just end on that, and that concludes my report.
Thank you. It's great information. Did you want to say something?
Yeah, I just want to just add, Madam Chair, members of the board, and I'll ask Ted to fill in if there's anything that you want to fill in after I'm finished, but one of the things I want to just try to tie into to what Mrs. Lyce is saying is that we've been working on, and I want to make sure that the viewing public and also the board understands the difference, we've been working to develop a consistent and robust student information system. And so you have a learning management system, and I just want to clarify the difference between the two, so that you understand. The student information system is an opportunity for us to take information, put it together, and codify it into one area where teachers can take this information, look at it, and be able to have real-time student information to make instructional decisions regarding student progress and student, students' abilities, to be, ability to be able to, where they are, to look at where they are in their particular content area. So it's an opportunity to take that information and put it together so that we can have it and be able to make some of those decisions. For example, you can see if a student's making progress in a particular course, you can also look at any of the anecdotal data to look at what has been tried before, all of that kind of thing. So that would be as much information as we can possibly get to be able to make decisions and have that at the fingertips of teachers and people in the buildings to ensure that we are doing everything possible to make sure students are on track. Then you have the management system, which takes all of the information that you get over here and manages it for people, so that they can look at it and say, here's all of the information, here's how we're managing it, how can we merge the two of those together so that we can have an opportunity to have a complete profile and be able to help students? So you have information, you have management, you have them coming together to be able to put this, put information in the hands of staff so that they can make the correct decisions. The big, the big thing for us, and I've been preaching this since I've been here, is that we have to be in a position to make mid-course corrections prior to what I call autopsy data, which is the data that you get at the end of the year after everything is already done. So we've been really trying to make sure that we are able to put that together. So I just want to kind of give you the big picture and the vision on the information and then the management, because one, you have to have information to manage, and we're just trying to put all of that together. And it's a, it's a change in how we've been doing business, and it'll be an opportunity for us to really have the necessary information to make the changes that need to be made. And we will be able to then inform the board as far as how we're making progress. And my question, and I always ask everybody, how do you know? And we'll be able to know because we'll have that information together. So it's, it's coming together, and I think it's something that teachers will embrace. And everyone within the organization will have an opportunity to be able to support that which we do. And I do applaud the efforts of Mr. Lyce and Dr. Smilak and the building for having the vision. And this is really where it's at. We're trying to, use a coaching analogy, we're trying to throw the ball out in front of where we need to be as opposed to where we are. And it's a different, it's a different mindset, and we're not waiting for Common Core to get ready for Common Core. We're trying to do that and embrace that within what we're doing. So all of these efforts are efforts to be able to put us in a position to do that. And I just wanted to give the board the context of what we've been talking about. And we're still looking at how that's all going to look and making sure that, you know, for me, the biggest thing is that it has to be teacher and consumer-friendly, that when you get it, you're able to take it and navigate it without having to go through a whole lot of angst as far as understanding what to do, everything's very simple, and we're able to do what we need to do. So all of those things are a part of what we, what we're trying to do. Mr. Lyce, if there's anything I'm missing, if you want to add that, go ahead and add.
Madam President, members of the board, Mr. Bell just did a fabulous job of really summarizing the difference between that learning, learning management system, which is all of the instructional resources that teachers need on a daily basis, and the, essentially the, the management data system that takes all of that data and allows you to make those instructional changes. All of this is, is wrapped around the three goals of the district, which I'm sure were evident at that meeting, is academic achievement. And Mr. Bell has really been asking some, some questions about, you know, preparing and taking that bite out of the dog, so we're not up against it when the Common Core comes, we're prepared for it and ready to embrace it. So academic achievement is at the, at the center of what we're doing here with these initiatives. And then the second is, you know, the effective, efficient management of our resources. Free is one of this committee's favorite words. They're looking at tools that are free, and since it is coming essentially from the ground up, from the teachers, we're really looking at tools, they're making recommendations to us about the tools that they find easy to use, which makes implementation much, much easier, and then from an efficiency standpoint, less training, less, less time the teachers are out in the building receiving training. So it's, it's really a win-win-win situation, so.
Yeah, thank you. One more thing. The other thing I just wanted to add is going back to Mr. Smith's comments and his legislative report, the one thing that I just want to make clear to the board and also to the public is that, and I think he said it, and he's very clear, that we don't, we encourage and support and embrace accountability, but one of the things that happens in urban school districts is that you have to understand the nature of student learning and being able to give kids an opportunity to be able to meet those standards. And what happens a lot of times with these, with the adjustments is that it takes time based off of some of the challenges that are just natural in the school district. So while we embrace the accountability, we also would embrace having time to be able to prepare to do what we need to do, because it takes a little bit more time. Our kids have challenges that are, may not be existent in some of the more fluid districts, and we have to be able to allow for that. And it makes it difficult when you don't have the opportunity to put those kids in a position that they can be successful. They can compete, but they have challenges that are unique, and it takes time spent to do that. And I think that's the, the issue with when you look at the accountability system and you look at, at how it is laid out, it doesn't give us enough time to be able to do some of the things that we want to be able to do in order to help kids to be successful. We'll do what we have to do, but we've got some challenges that are extremely difficult and unique. And when you want to treat each child as an individual, you spend more time. And so while we want to do that, it makes it a little bit more difficult. So I can appreciate the, the report, and I appreciate the perspective. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Do we have any additions or revisions to the agenda?
We have one addition, and it will be, I'm sorry, it's revision. It's item number 20, consider reimbursement for transportation as a law.
Before we begin and open it up for visitor comments, I just want to take a moment to thank the voters of the city of Euclid for supporting our levy. Last month, we were, we knew we had passed based on the numbers we were given election night, but there was still the issue of all the provisional ballots and so forth. And we have been certified that we did pass by a larger margin than that night. And I want to thank the voters of Euclid. Please know that we will do everything possible to be accountable and also to stretch these dollars that you've given us. We know it's a tough time, schools are going through it just like you are, and we will, we pledge that we will be accountable. Every 90 days, Mr. Bell will be meeting with the community. His next meeting is February 7th?
7th, February.
7th, yes, February 7th. And that will be at Arbor Elementary. So that, at 7 o'clock, thank you. And we will be, we're inviting the whole community to come. You don't have to have students in the system. These are your schools, and the children are your children. The old saying of takes a village to raise a child, it certainly takes an entire community to educate the children here. We did win by 253 votes. We know that's now a lot. We know that there are some people who are still concerned about our accountability, and we vow that we will make you proud with the money that we have and the work that we're doing. We have new leadership, and between the new leadership, and you're going to hear some new ideas coming out from the various schools and so forth. I think you're going to be really proud of our schools the next time we have to go around for a levy. And unfortunately, because Ohio Fund Schools, the way they are, you know we will be back. We will work very hard though to try to make that last the three years that we said, and if we can squeeze out a fourth year, believe me, we will. One concern that I do have is that the state of Ohio was just informed that they cannot use the gasoline tax or anything other than roads and bridges, which means there's another, I believe it's $71 million that state is going to have to come up with, and I'm just hoping that schools are not the target to balance state's budget again. We'll keep our fingers crossed. At this point, are there any visitor comments relative to the printed agenda? Seeing none, we'll move on to reports and recommendations of the treasurer, Mr. Bassett.
Thank you. Item eight is a resolution approving financial data as submitted to the board, and I recommend approval.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Moved by Mrs. Sudar, second?
Second.
By Mrs. DeAngelis, sorry, I've got two names combined. Are there any questions or comments? Call the roll, please.
Mr. Smith. Yes, Mrs. Sudar.
Yes.
Mrs. Van Hope.
Yes.
Mrs. DeAngelis.
Yes.
Mrs. Lyce.
Yes.
Motion carries, 5-0.
Item nine is a resolution approving a transfer of funds, and I recommend approval.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Moved by Mrs. Sudar, second.
Second.
By Mr. Smith. If you wanted to just explain what's happening.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. This is an annual transfer that the board makes from the general fund to the debt service fund to service debt used in previous years for energy retrofitting programs. The theory behind those programs is, was to obviously save money over the long term, and those savings would be used to service that debt. And this is just the, the movement of the money so we can service that debt.
And that's things like improved lighting and heating and so forth?
That's right.
Okay, thank you. Call the roll, please.
Mrs. Sudar.
Yes.
Mrs. Van Hope.
Yes.
Mrs. DeAngelis.
Yes.
Mrs. Lyce.
Yes.
Mr. Smith.
Yes.
Motion carries, 5-0. And item 10 is a resolution to adopt the revised five-year forecast, and I recommend approval.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Moved by Mrs. Sudar, second.
Second.
By Mrs. DeAngelis.
Yeah, say a few words.
You may, sure may.
Madam Chair and members of the board, I'd like to give a fairly short presentation of the five-year forecast. This is an updated forecast which will take us through the fiscal '15 year. And again, thanks to the voters, I'm actually here to provide some positive news for once. It's not too often that I can do that. But what you will see is positive fund, and what you have seen from the spreadsheet submitted to you is positive ending fund balances through the fiscal '15, '16 year, the first deficit showing in fiscal '17 year, but also, and very importantly, this is showing two years of actual operating surpluses, which means we should be able to build up our operating reserves to use into the future. Just talked about some revenue factors. I want to talk about real estate and the effect of the 2012 reappraisal, the dollars coming in from the new levy, a little, what's happening with the city school income tax revenues. The state funding is a very key assumption in this, and really, whatever happens with the state funding will determine a lot going into the year. Real estate, I've, I've reported to the board that the 2012 six-year reappraisal will reflect a significant decrease to residential property values. It's been estimated at a reduction of 26%. We, at least I'm not aware of the figures are in yet, but we should know fairly soon what those are. But given that 26%, I'm estimating that the total CIS valuation will drop from $744 million to $584 million in 2012. Now, of course, the majority of our millage does get adjusted both up and down due to House Bill 920. However, inside millage does not change, and that will change the revenue patterns based on assessed valuation. With a reduction like that, revenue loss from our inside millage collections, I would estimate to be $660,000 annually beginning in 2013. Of course, the best news of all is the levy that was passed by the voters. We know it's a 10-year, $5.4 million per year, we'll begin collecting those next month, actually. And so for the fiscal '12, '13 year, we'll essentially receive half of a annual collection of $2.7 million. Just sort of, I don't think we need to be reminded, but we've taken a lot of hits from revenue from the state foundation, federal government, the change in personal tangible tax laws, the economy. This really replaces revenue that we've lost in the past. It's just actually brought us back up to a level from about three years ago, but obviously very, very much needed. very, very much needed. The income tax, in fiscal '15, we received $6.1 million, and that's when the economy took a turn for the worse. So we had, I believe it was three years in a row of declining income tax revenues. In fiscal '11, that started to creep up. And again, in fiscal '12, we received $5.9 million, not quite back to where we were. Up into the future, both this year and in future fiscal years, I've assumed a 2% annual increase. With that, if the assumption comes true, we will be back at the fiscal '18 levels in fiscal '14 at about $6.1 million. Okay, here's the big unanswered question. There have been several state funding formulas, as you all know, over the last several years. Four years ago, Governor Strickland introduced the evidence-based model. It was quite a change, although not funded fully, but it had some rationale behind it. Governor Kasich came in and basically threw the evidence-based model out and put in a temporary, what he called "bridge formula," which was just a bridge into the next biennium, which will start July of 2013. He's promised a new funding formula. I don't know that anybody has an idea of what it is. But we have to make, obviously, some assumptions in the forecast. So what I've done is, I've assumed not so much as what the formula is, but dollars attached to it. I've made the assumption of an increase of 1% in the basic aid funding, just given the fact that the economy's better, the state task collections are up a little bit, they're on track, and knowing that school districts were cut drastically last time around, hopefully there's some increases. So I've built in an annual increase of 1% over the next five years. Here's the big one in my mind. The board may remember that in previous formulas, it was there for decades, the charge-off factor. Basically, within the state foundation, there was an assumed level of local collections based on 23 mils. That was netted out against the gross formula, which was a number of students times a per pupil funding amount. So as property values would increase, the charge-off would increase, and we would receive less state funding. Flipping that around, as values decreased, the charge-off would decrease, and that would give us more state funding. Again, we don't know what's going to happen, but I am assuming that there still will be some recognition of relative property values or lack thereof. I don't know if there'll be a charge-off or something akin to it, but the assumption I made is there will be a recognition of that, and we will receive some additional funding due to our decrease in assessed valuation. And I've assumed it at half of the previous charge-off formula, to be conservative. Hopefully, it would be nice to get the whole thing, but again, this is really a shot in the dark. This is our best guess at this point. The charge-off was always, the change in the charge-off was always phased in over three years, so I assume that, too. The old formula would indicate that our state funding would increase at about, by about $3.6 million, based on what we expect to lose in value. So half that's about $1.8 million. So I phased that in, about $600,000 each over the next three years. So that's going to be key in looking at our long-term finances, how that turns out. Other things, especially in the revenue, we have a pretty good handle on. This we really don't, but we can only make educated guesses at this point. School choice, after many years of very significant increases, at least at this point in time overall, we've pretty much leveled off. 2012, the total deduction from our foundation for school choice is $8.5 million. It's currently about at that same level. This year, it's showing an increase, net increase of $22,000. So that's really peanuts when looking at the whole picture. Specifically, deductions for charter schools is showing a decrease compared to last year of $376,000. Vouchers are showing an increase of $398,000. And this would include the new autism vouchers. I believe we have 12 or 13 of them out right now, $17,500 apiece. That's included in the voucher number. Moving forward, I'm assuming that the high-rated growth has leveled off, but also that knowing where the state is and where they want to go, I felt I had to put something in. So I made an assumption of an increase of $100,000 a year, mostly in vouchers, the next five years. Here's some summary numbers. You see real estate really increasing over the next two years. Fiscal '12, '13 is a half-year collection. The first four-year collection will be fiscal '13, '14. That would put us at $36.5 million. Some slight increases are showing over the ensuing years, mostly due to assumed increase in collection rates as the economy gets better. The income tax, again, a 2% increase. Hopefully, by '17, if those assumptions pan out, we'll be at about $6.5 million. The state aid reflects the factors that I just told you about relative to the charge-off and the 1% increase. And the total revenues were moving from almost $70 million this year up to about the $74 million-plus range. And again, that pretty much levels off, as we all know. Key, obviously, in expenditure assumptions are why in personnel, as they make up 80% of our budget. I've made an assumption that staffing levels will remain the same. As far as increased costs, I put a 2% total annual increase in there as kind of a benchmark management tool to kind of give us a picture of what that might look at. We'll be going back to the bargaining table in 2013 with all of our groups. If you remember the last time, every employee took a 3% compensation reduction, and every group did it a little differently. There was some wage reductions, some photo days, some increase in benefits. So kind of have a whole grab-bag of things out there. And typically, I like to forecast, you know, what normal steps cost and staffing level changes and wage increases or reductions. In this instance, I just did a straight 2% off of this year's numbers as a base. So at least that gives us a benchmark looking out. Benefits, the other piece of very good news is we just received our 2000 renewal, and on our agenda, we have the new rates, and I'll talk about that a little later. But we've had, we had very good claims experiences last year, and our rates are going down to the tune of about $700,000 overall, over the course of a full year. So I built that in and started with the new base, and then beyond that, I went back to 10% per year, beginning in calendar 2014. And a recent figure I heard, industry-wide, it's running at about 8.5% now. So hopefully, it'll maintain at a fairly decent level like that, but I do have 10% in there. Purchase services, I've based the 2013 number based on spending 97% of our appropriations. As the board knows, we almost always spend less than what's appropriated. So I made the assumption of spending 97%. After that, 4% per year. Purchase services typically are more volatile because of utilities, special education costs. There are things that are kind of volatile and not well within our control. So I put a 4% inflationary factor overall on purchase services. Materials and supplies, made the assumption of spending 98% of appropriations and a 2.5% inflationary figure thereafter. Did the same thing with capital. The other expenditures, I bumped it up a little bit in fiscal '13 and '14 due to county treasurer and otter's expenses. Those numbers are based on tax collections. And since our tax collections will be increasing, I figure county treasurer and otter will increase. So I built a 6% increase in fiscal '13 and '14, and then 3% thereafter. The numbers, you'll see in personnel, which is both wages and benefits, $54.5 million this year, and moving up pretty evenly through fiscal '17 to $61.2 million. See the non-personnel from $15.2 to $17.6. And you see the total, which I believe is, reflects an average increase of 3.2%. So this is showing over the next five years, an average increase in expenditures of 3.2%. Here's a summary page. Again, I talked in that third row there, I talked about the operating surplus. That is hugely important in my mind. It looks like we might hit that to about $200,000 this year. Looking to have a nice year of fiscal '14, then we start the same cycle, the old cycle of deficit spending again. But the fund balance is showing a carryover balance each year through the fiscal '16 year. Importantly also is, in the last forecast, we were making the assumption that we would use reserves, including our budget reserve and some buildup medical reserves. We've been able to take that out. So we still have that safety net out there into the future. So in summary, given the assumptions that I base these numbers on, and again, the state funding is a big one, I believe we can make it through the fiscal '15, '16 year, which is our three years that we promised. With a chance, if things fall right, if we make some other expenditure adjustments, I believe that we may have a chance to get through the '16, '17 year. But obviously, that's a long way off, and a lot can happen between now and then. With that, I'd be happy to entertain questions.
Do we have any questions?
Thank you, Steve, for your excellent presentation and strange sense of optimism, which I'm not really used to hearing from you.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Yeah. The purchase services expenditure, included in that is special education costs. And that's the, as you project our expenditures out, that's the highest category for expenditures in terms of percentage increase.
Yes, yes. Within that, I believe I have about a 10% increase.
Just special ed?
Special ed tuition.
Okay.
We've got all, our internal special ed costs would be in wages and benefits, mostly.
Oh, okay.
The purchase services are where we pay other districts, other entities tuition to serve our students.
Can I just add something to that, Steve, too? The other thing that happens is that we have, it becomes a little bit sometimes hard to predict because of what types of needs students come to us with, so we don't have a way of really being able to predict what that might look like and be able to control it. So it's sometimes it makes it a bit difficult to get a handle on what that figure might look like. Ken, do you have anything you want to add to that?
And what's the percentage of our students that have a special ed designation, just for the benefit of those watching at home? It's like 1 in 8, is that it?
Our student population is roughly 20% of our total student population is special education. A little over 1,100 of our 5,600 students are special ed identified.
So 20%. And that's where our numbers are mixed up. And that's about two times the statewide average, a little bit more than that?
The state average is closer to about 14%, so it's not quite twice, but it's relative to local urban areas and first-string suburbs.
That's right.
Where the special education populations are particularly high, especially in association with a good hospital structure for students that are very, very needy and need hospital services to correspond with their educational services.
Right. And that was just, and again, you know, we've said this before from this table, just that that's one of the cost factors that affects urban districts and suburban districts like Euclid, and just that, you know, our community needs to be aware of that. Obviously, we're very interested in providing those children with the services that they deserve and require. But when, again, as Governor Kasich looks to try to put forth a new spending formula, perhaps at the same time while we're going through the budget negotiations, which is going to be very interesting down in Columbus, it's going to be important for our community and this district to watch how special ed costs are handled. Because if you compute special ed costs at the statewide average, districts like Euclid are going to lose because we have a higher percentage than what the statewide average is.
Let me just add, Madam President and members of the board, that, and I think Mrs. Allen pointed out that, you know, when you look at that 20%, that's all districts. When you look at the urban eight districts, and you look at the large districts, and you look at urban districts, that number's a little bit higher. So that's one factor. The other factor that you have in there is that because of the special nature of student need, we don't have the capacity within our current personnel and a lot of times ways of being able to address that. So then what we have to do then is go out and pay for that same service, and then we are then held to whatever that cost is because we don't have any control over what that might look like because we can't service the students. So there's some factors in there we just cannot control. So we do everything we can to make sure we have access of where kids' needs are so that we can actually do what we need to do, but oftentimes, we can't service them due to the special need that they have. So it does make it difficult. And I can appreciate Mr. Bassett's conservatism in that, in those numbers, but it does make it very difficult for us to figure out what that might look like.
I just have one other subject that I wanted to ask about. The 1% increase in state foundation formula that you're assuming. And again, just for the benefit of the folks watching at home, we've heard a lot of talk out of Columbus that the governor wants to come up with a new funding formula for K-12 education, public education. And so as you were going through that, the first thing I wrote down next to that PowerPoint slide was a question mark. You've assumed a 1% increase. Is that, I mean, have you politely kind of?
I don't have any insider information.
Yeah. Because I was going to kind of politely say, what are some of your other school treasurers going? Because I don't know if that's a safe assumption or not, and I don't hold you in any way kind of responsible for that. I just wondered if there was some sort of feeling among the public school finance community whether or not you should go with 1%. Or, I mean, I would almost think, you know, a couple of percentage points reduction.
To be honest with you, probably the majority of treasurers, only from the standpoint of the majority of school districts are on the guarantee, which means the formula, they've long outgrown the formula. long outgrown the formula.
Yeah.
And they're on the guarantee, which means they get what they got last year. And that's been going on forever and ever. And the last number I heard was about 2/3 of the districts in the state are on the guarantee. So I call this guarantee, I won't guarantee it, but I'm going to guess the majority of treasurers are flatlining it. We are still, and it's fortunate, assuming a charge-off is still in play next time around, it's fortunate that we still are on the formula. And, you know, I picked the 1% out basically two reasons. Number one, the state tax collections seem to be doing better. I believe they're actually exceeding a little bit of their projections. The economy's doing better. Our local economy's doing better by virtue of the income tax. And also, K-12 education really took a hit last time, so hopefully they'll show a little mercy and provide some funding. I was just kind of in a giddy mood because of the tax levy. 1% on $22 million is not a lot of money in the big picture. It's $20,000, $22,000. No, $220,000, I'm sorry. That is a lot of money, second thought. On $75 million is, I guess it could be, could make a case for it to be material, but...
Yeah, like I said, I just didn't know if the public school finance community, you know, was coalescing around a certain number.
No, not that we're...
Because, yeah, just, again, and for the benefit of those watching at home, I mean, this is something that we're going to have to watch. I mean, the first six months of 2013 are going to be very interesting from a public school funding issue, both in terms of the state budget and perhaps the recalibration of the state funding formula. And some of the factors that weigh into that, that were, you know, our, again, some of our cost factors are higher than the state average, which means that if Columbus decides to just kind of do a state average computation of expenses and revenue and that kind of thing, we're probably going to lose. But again, we will, we will watch the situation very closely, and we appreciate your many years of experience on trying to figure this thing out.
Thank you. And for the benefit of the community, it should be made clear, this is not our spending plan. This is a management tool looking into the future. Obviously, we're not going to spend that 1% until we know we have it.
Right.
But it's just, the five-year forecast is a management tool for making long-term decisions, and the spending plan is obviously with the appropriations in September.
Sebastian, I think also, you can correct me if I'm wrong, the other factor into those assumptions, into that assumption would then be the 26% reduction in assessed value because of the, and the offset of that with the charge-off.
Yeah, well, it's not in the 1%. That's separate.
That's not in that one?
I catch that separate.
Okay. That's what I wanted to clarify. Thank you.
Is there any other questions? When is, we have two emergency lobbies on our books now. When does the first one come off?
First one will come off in 2018.
18, that's what I thought, okay. So...
That will be the last tax, that will be the last tax year, the last collection year will be 2019.
Okay. Just because that, and it's not in here, so we don't see the big drop at that point. And that's something that future boards will have to be very cognizant of.
Yes.
Have we had any mid-budget changes to our state formula this biennium?
Not yet.
Not yet, okay.
Some minor adjustments, but nothing similar.
But nothing like we've had before?
No.
Okay. The, you know, as you said, this is a tool, a management tool as a guide, and that's important for the public to understand. This is a requirement of the state that we do this. Now, Euclid did three-year forecasts and then five-year forecasts long before the state ever required it. And we've always faced the same challenge of trying to predict what the state is going to do five years out. Well, think about it, if the new biennium starts in July of next year and they don't even have the formula figured out yet, let alone what their budget's going to look like, you know, it seems like they have a tendency to wait until the last minute to make these changes, and that really impacts us, you know. If ever there were to be a bit larger decrease in state money to us, we usually find out after we've already committed our staff for the next year, which means you have to pay them. And so that's going to, that will be difficult. I'm going to keep my fingers crossed that, like you are, that we took a big hit last time, and that maybe they'll find some other places to take the hit. But school cities, libraries, counties really took it last time, so let's hope that they've got enough money not to do that again. But I do find it odd that they want us to do five years out, but they only do a budget for two years at a time, and then that's late. Okay, thank you. Call the roll, please.
Mrs. Van Hoen.
Yes.
Mrs. De Angelis.
Yes.
Mrs. Lysy.
Yes.
Mr. Smith.
Yes.
Mrs. Sudar.
Yes.
Motion carries, 5-0. Item 11 is a resolution to authorizing securing funds from taxes. I recommend approval.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Moved by Mrs. Sudar, second.
Second.
By Mr. Smith.
If I may, this is a routine resolution the county auditor requests, so they can execute collection and disbursement of our taxes.
Thank you. Are there any questions or comments? I'll refrain. Call the roll, please.
Mr. Smith.
Yes.
Mrs. Sudar.
Yes.
Mrs. Van Hoen.
Yes.
Mrs. De Angelis.
Yes.
Mrs. Lysy.
Yes.
Motion carries, 5-0. And item 12 is a resolution approving tax rates for 2013, and this does include our new village. Recommend approval.
Okay, is there a motion?
So moved.
Moved by Mrs. Sudar, second.
Second.
By Mrs. De Angelis. Any questions or comments? Call the roll, please.
Mrs. Sudar.
Yes.
Mrs. Van Hoen.
Yes.
Mrs. De Angelis.
Yes.
Mrs. Lysy.
Yes.
Mr. Smith.
Yes.
Motion carries, 5-0. Item 13 is a resolution approving healthcare rates for 2013. I recommend approval.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Moved by Mrs. Sudar, second.
Second.
By Mrs. Lysy. Any questions or comments?
If I may make a few comments? Talked about this a little bit with the forecast. Specifically, there are increases to a couple of these. The Kaiser rates are increased by 5%. The Delta dental rates are increased by 2.6%. The good news is, medical mutual healthcare is reduced by 8.2%. And the medical mutual's prescription drug is reduced by 11%. The vision rates are the same as last year. There is a slight increase in administrative fees of 1.4%. When we put all of it together, the overall reduction is 6.6%. And for our staff, now that they pay a percentage of the premiums, they will see a little bit of relief beginning in January. I did a quick calculation before we came down here, and I believe a staff member with family coverage should see about a $20 increase to their paycheck from reduction of the medicals. So, and that will start in January, we're very happy about that.
Okay. Call, yeah, call the roll, please.
Mrs. Van Hoen.
Yes.
Mrs. De Angelis.
Yes.
Mrs. Lysy.
Yes.
Mr. Smith.
Yes.
Mrs. Sudar.
Yes.
Motion carries, 5-0. And lastly, my report is a resolution, number 14, accepting donations. We received generous donations from Catherine Pasquale, $500 to be used in memory of Ben Pasquale, and a donation of $1,000 from the Dale E. and Bernice F. Mansberger Foundation for the grads program. Recommend approval.
Okay, so moved. I'm sorry.
So moved.
Is there a motion? Moved by Mrs. Sudar, second.
Second.
By Mrs. De Angelis, okay. Some habits get hard to break. I do want to mention that the donation from Pasquale, who's a teacher in our high school, is for the high school mediation program. And also that Dale Mansberger had been board member for a number of years, and his daughter is a special ed teacher in our system, so... Any other questions or comments? Call the roll, please.
Mrs. De Angelis.
Yes.
Mrs. Lysy.
Yes.
Mr. Smith.
Yes.
Mrs. Sudar.
Yes.
Mrs. Van Hoen.
Yes.
Motion carries, 5-0. And that concludes my report.
Okay. I'll turn to reports and recommendations to the superintendent, Mr. Bell.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. I'd like to turn this portion of the program over to Dr. Andrea Seliko, Assistant Superintendent, who will bring our personnel recommendations to the board. Dr. Seliko.
Thank you, Mr. Bell. 2013 school year with one change to the tutor resignation date from December 7th to the 14th, and I recommend approval.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Moved by Mrs. Sudar, second by Mrs. Lysy. Are there any questions or comments? Call the roll, please.
Mrs. Lysy.
Yes.
Mr. Smith.
Yes.
Mrs. Sudar.
Yes.
Mrs. Van Hoen.
Yes.
Mrs. De Angelis.
Yes.
Motion carries, 5-0.
Thank you. Item 16 is a resolution considering the classified staff for the 2012-13 school year, and I recommend approval.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Moved by Mrs. Sudar, second.
Second.
By Mrs. De Angelis. Any questions or comments? Call the roll, please.
Mr. Smith.
Yes.
Mrs. Sudar.
Yes.
Mrs. Van Hoen.
Yes.
Mrs. De Angelis.
Yes.
Mrs. Lysy.
Yes.
Motion carries, 5-0.
Thank you. And item 17 is a resolution considering grant payments, and I recommend approval.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Moved by Mrs. Sudar, second.
Second.
By Mr. Smith. Are there any questions or comments? Call the roll.
Mrs. Sudar.
Yes.
Mrs. Van Hoen.
Yes.
Mrs. De Angelis.
Yes.
Mrs. Lysy.
Yes.
Mr. Smith.
Yes.
Motion carries, 5-0.
And before Mr. Bell goes on, I just want to remind the public that we can go through some of these rather quickly because they're very routine. Mr. Bell.
Thank you, Madam President, members of the board. Item number 18 is the consideration for donations.
Okay, is there a motion?
So moved.
Moved by Mrs. Sudar, second.
Second.
By Mrs. De Angelis. We can note that the computers are being used in the Cisco program at the high school, and that they were donated by Progressive Insurance. So we appreciate all that support. And the backpacks that were distributed to the kindergarteners is a wonderful project that Mrs. Sudar deserves a lot of credit for getting them all together and getting them distributed. It's a very worthwhile project. Call the roll, please.
I have a comment.
Oh, go ahead.
Make a comment. I would just like to make some additional acknowledgements for the kindergarten backpack program. Girl Scout Troops 70937, a group of cadet girls, Rachel Sadowski, Jesslyn Mashad, Melody Gruden, Morgan Stanton, Megan Britz, Brianna Jordan, and Malaya Beth Lee, and their leaders, Susan Ross and Cheryl Gruden, worked so hard at putting those backpacks together. These are kids, children from our community that came night after night after night to help assemble the backpacks, and I promised them that I would publicly acknowledge their help. In addition to them, Rhea Chandler Dyson, the Vice President of Arbor PTA, and her daughter Lola, the Sheridan Hills PTA, Julie Satteritis and her daughters Christina and Lonnie and Barb Grisay and her daughters Megan and Erin, Leslie Calbury, Pam Shank, Kathy De Angelis, and the Johnson family. These are people who put in a great deal of time to make this happen, and it is a labor of love, and a lot of hours are put into this. And hopefully, we can continue to do this for our kindergarteners.
Thank you. Sure. Call the roll, please.
Mrs. Van Hoen.
Yes.
Mrs. De Angelis.
Yes.
Mrs. Lysy.
Yes.
Mr. Smith.
Yes.
Mrs. Sudar.
Yes.
Motion carries, 5-0.
Thank you. Item 19 is a consideration for, to authorize the amendment to the lease for the Hen Mansion. And just a little background on that, the...
Let's get it on the floor first, okay. We'll get it on the floor first, and then, is there a motion?
So moved.
Moved by Mrs. Sudar, was that you, Sudar? Okay, second.
Second.
By Mr. Smith. Okay, now you can't.
Thank you. I was ready to go.
I know.
And it's, we are the fiscal agent for the, our ABLE, for our ABLE grant, and ABLE stands for Adult Basic Literacy Education. And so what we do then is we, as the fiscal agent, then we manage that. So what we're asking to do is to allow this lease to go through so that they can continue to offer that service.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? Call the roll, please.
Mrs. De Angelis.
Yes.
Mrs. Lysy.
Yes.
Mr. Smith.
Yes.
Mrs. Sudar.
Yes.
Mrs. Van Hoen.
Yes.
Motion carries, 5-0.
Thank you. Item 20 is a consideration for the approval of reimbursements for transportation in lieu of being able to transport students, and we're asking for approval.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Moved by Mrs. Sudar, second.
Second.
By Mr. Smith. Are there any questions or comments?
What is that dollar to, that financial reimbursement? Do you know what that is, per parent?
Yes, right now, it's approximately $45,000, but that may fluctuate based on who moves in or who moves out. But right now, we're looking at about $45,000 as a total.
And how much per child, or how soon?
It's about $225, 22.
Just about.
And just, members of the board, Mr. Higley, the figure that you just gave the board is derived, just talk to us a little bit about how that's derived.
It's based on 196 kids, and these are, these are students, grades K through 8. There aren't any high school students because of the minimum transportation standards the district went to last January. So what we do is, when it's deemed impractical to transport these students based on the fact that we may not have a bus in the area, or that we may not have room on the buses, or it just doesn't fit in the routes based on start times of schools, we offer these families payment in lieu of transportation. And that payment for the year is $225, 22 cents.
And they receive that at the end of the year?
That's correct, in June.
Are there any other questions or comments? Thank you for checking out those numbers. And once again, the high school students do not get transportation because our high school students do not get transportation.
Correct.
Thank you. Okay, call the roll, please.
Mrs. Lysy.
Yes.
Mr. Smith.
Yes.
Mrs. Sudar.
Yes.
Mrs. Van Hoen.
Yes.
Mrs. De Angelis.
Yes.
Motion carries, 5-0.
Thank you. Item number 21 is a consideration for, to approve out-of-district field trip by Forest Park Middle School.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Moved by Mrs. Sudar, second.
Second.
By Mrs. Lysy.
And again, this trip is from Forest Park, and it's an opportunity for those students, June 5th through the 7th, to visit our nation's capital. They get an opportunity to understand government, they get an opportunity to, in conjunction with their American history and language arts courses, and they have to meet certain behavioral expectations in order for them to attend, and so I'm asking for approval.